We did have the electronic version earlier than that. It would be great if we distributed it that way. And we'll give them plenty of room.
She has it all covered. All right, we're going to get started on our budget workshop. It is after long. I think we had, we have a new, we have the latest packet of the budget. To go over it, it includes up-to-date revenue amounts, up-to-date, those other things we were waiting on, SAU amounts.
Another change, we thought you guys had made the last.
Changes that we made last time. And Bob also, we also, in our packet, were the... There also included some warrant information, and we have some other things. So, lots of things to try to finalize tonight. So we can get this going to present to the budgeting committee next Wednesday. It's less than a week away. All right, so I guess if you want to walk us through it again.
Sure.
Where we are, and then...
Sure, why don't we start by, Katie, you can just go over the first page, and I'll take them from there.
So, as Trudy said, the revenue did change. We got the updated figures from the state. It has gone down quite a bit, about $52,000 from the state. So that's reflected there. So in total, it's about $150,000 less than last year, or current year. That's because of the transfer of the trust funds, and then that $52,000 loss of revenue from the state. The expenditure side, but based on all the changes that we made last time, it's $22,000 less than the current year's budget. So in total, $127,000 net budget decrease.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it's important that we emphasize among ourselves and to other people that the budget itself is down, but our revenues have also been decreased. Decreased from the state. So while we're doing a good job with our budget, we don't have any control over the net revenue stream from the state.
And those are estimates at this point.
They still are.
They revise them. And we just got our revised numbers for the current year in November, so that won't happen until, you know, the following November.
So, just a quick fact, I mean, this $22,000 less does not take into account, or does take into account, the reduced revenue?
Nope. So the revenue is at 149, the, this is the decrease in expenditure, so the net is the 127, that includes both. And then once we finalize, I'll do that tax impact sheet again like I did last year that shows each of the items and what the impact is on the taxes.
All right, so after that, you have the kind of overall, but if you can go to this page, the proposed budget, I'll just walk you through, and if you have any questions along the way, you can address those. It's right after those.
Yes, I put all my questions on this one.
And I'll just go page by page and get some of the highlights, and if you have questions on any of those, feel free to jump in. Katie, please do the same. On the first page, you see that our teaching salaries are down $30,000. That's, those are actuals because of new hires and people that retired. So we're taking it off the present budget and where they would be. So there's an adjustment there as well. We did add the additional day for PE in there, so that was one of the things that you discussed last time. You can see that the, down a little bit farther, we've got the actuals on the health insurance and the dental insurance. Health insurance rate was an increase of 4.5%, and dental insurance was on a 3.9% increase. So those have been adjusted in this budget as well. Going down a little bit further, you'll see a $59,000 reduction in tuition for middle school. Again, those are the rates that we've gotten from Marshwood, so we took existing population and adjusted it accordingly.
And I added that for one contingency student we decided, I mean, we reduced one. Didn't add, reduced one for last time.
And then right below that is the high school, and you can see, again, it's up $45,000, but that's simply going by existing students and taking the tuition number accordingly.
And that one went up between the first budget and this budget, the high school students, right?
Yeah, it just, they flip flops.
Yeah, okay.
So there's an increase in tuition rate, but just the number of students makes the decrease in...
Right, you've got, yeah, all at the same time.
The difference between the middle school and high school, it's that $11,000 reduction of the one contingency student. It just moved between middle and high. From last time just to...
So we had someone allocate it as a high school student.
Oh, okay.
So you're supposed to be in it.
So if you take the difference, it's the 11,000.
If we had more students.
But that is something that we can keep an eye on, and if we have a couple of students move in between now and the time that, you know, you go finalize your budget, then we certainly can adjust that along the line. We keep an eye on that. You've got some increases in general supplies, general supply reading. You can see some other adjustments there, up and down slightly on supplies on the first page. Preference books that were purchased, that are a reduction there on the first page of $3,800. Any questions on the first page? Going on to the second page, technology, new equipment. We've got a decrease there of $13,000. And Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, that's because that there has been some substantial purchases over the last couple of years that have allowed us to get into a situation where we could make a reduction like that. Correct. Again, on the other side, technology equipment replacement, up slightly, $3,000 on that. Just trying to keep into that rotation and not get behind. So that's a little bit of an increase there. And then going down through the rest of that, you can see new equipment, some slight increases and some slight decreases along the way, just because of the requested by the staff.
I was asking, about the new equipment purchases going down, going significantly. And that's not going to set us up for a dramatic increase next?
You're looking at the top line of the... $13,000.
I don't...
Taking that into account, is that...
Well, new equipment fluctuates slightly because it's not something like supplies that you need to do every year, but from my understanding, and again, jump in, Rich, it is, these were the requests that were put out for teachers, and it's, that's what was requested, so I think...
Well, this is technology, though, so...
Not all of it, no.
Oh, not all of that?
No.
I thought all that line was technology.
The 13, the 13.
That's the one we're talking about, it's the 13,000.
Oh, I thought you were talking about all of them.
No, no, just that top line.
Okay, just the top line of technology.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to...
We've still got, we still have $15,000. No, wait a minute.
No, we don't.
$2,100, $2,100. And we've got $29,000 for replace equipment, which you'll see, you'll see in a normal replacement cycle, it goes from new equipment to replace equipment, so we've got...
If you remember too, for the current year's budget, we broke it out a little bit. So it all used to be listed under the new equipment, so that's why in the years past, you've had like $50,000, things like that. It's because we didn't have it broken out by the end in replacement, so...
Got it, okay, so we still have...
You still have technology.
Over $30,000, yes.
And over time, if we're in a good replacement cycle, you'll see a pretty consistent amount in replacement of equipment, and the new equipment will go down.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about all of those.
So by new, we mean actually brand-new, we've never, instead of replacing 15, we're getting five new, 20, five are new and...
Or adding a complete laptop cart or something like that that will be... And down the bottom of that, starting to get into special education. You can see some salary adjustments there. The mainstream coach is a slight decrease. Any highlights there, Katie?
No, and nothing changed from last time to this time in special ed, so that's the same as we've considered.
And then down the bottom of that page, you'll see your special ed tuition, high school, middle school. And again, that's a snapshot in time, trying to take our best guess, so if we were to get a high-need student or something that would adjust that, that moves in in the next month or so, we could adjust that number either up or down. On page three, finishing off special education. You can see the bottom line, and that is fairly stagnant. I mean, it's down $1,000, but it's pretty close. Moving down that page, co-curriculars were adjusted slightly down. I think we discussed that last time. And then down at the bottom of the page, guidance services and nursing services as well, fairly stagnant. Page four, again, nurses' services, speech services. Just looking down the adaptive PE, we talked about that last time. That was a figure that was in there for, I guess, a number of years that wasn't utilized, so we've adjusted that down slightly because the need is not a glaring need. And then also down at the bottom of your sheet, librarian services. And the benefits adjusted accordingly.
For the adaptive, do we, is the 672, do we expect to spend much more of that line? Do we maybe want to knock that down a little further?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good, it's a good question. This only goes back really a couple of years, and one year, apparently, I mean, some of those are actuals. We did spend just under $5,000. The following year, we only spent 672, and then we had it at 5, and I don't think we're spending any this year. I don't know, I don't think we are.
That's a tough one to get a candle on, year after year. I guess I would suggest we're reducing it $2,500. I would suggest we leave it at $2,500, and then reduce it that again next year.
If I remember correctly, for this current year, it was at 20,000, because what we had budgeted, going into the budget process last year, we decreased it by 15,000 to 5 for the current year. Remember during the, you know, the hearing or the deliberative, one of them, we brought it down from 20,000 to 5, so it was significantly higher when we put that before this year.
Leaving it at 2,500, or reducing it to $2,500 and leaving 25 in there, we can keep an eye on it and get a little better history over time. On page five.
We did add the additional meetings in for the, we talked about that last time, for the secretary for any additional meetings.
There wasn't a large increase.
No, to me, I mean, the increase of the meetings.
I think we was, yeah. We ran through it last year.
And at the bottom of that page, legal services, we've reduced that by $7,500 as well. Page six. The SAU assessment, we put that number in, that's not a final number until after Monday night. But that's a best guess at this point. Let's see, school administration. Any questions on page six? Custodial services starts at the bottom of that page.
Is there a specific reason for administrative general supplies going up? It was 1,000, and now it's 4,000, is that right?
Rich?
That's the line that we put a couple of field trip requests into, because we don't have a specific, we have field trip transportation, we don't have a line for field trip cost, and there were a couple of requests by staff members.
Yeah, and that's, and that's about the 3,000 more.
Page seven, moving into custodial supplies. You'll see that the custodial replacement is down $3,900. We have adjusted grounds maintenance, if you work your way down, grounds maintenance is up $35,000, and you can see the appropriated things in there that are budgeted for. One of the biggest is the replacement of the pipe water from Locust Street. We put a $40,000 marker in there.
Yeah.
Best guess at this point.
We had a discussion about that last night, and one of the water commissioners definitely thought that if we could get the contractor for, that's doing the, all the other work to do it, and use their trenchless system, that it would probably be more, his estimate was more in the run of 10,000. I don't know.
But that was the commissioner's guess, right?
Yeah, okay. I was providing for me.
If we don't spend it, it would be great, but it just makes me nervous not having it, because if it goes, if it goes over that $10,000, more towards the $40,000, then we need to make it up somewhere else, which comes from your school.
I would absolutely recommend it.
But last time we met, Dick, we mentioned that we are required to change our line coming in. And so that's a, is that a state, is the state saying we...
From what I understand, it's the state, they're requiring, when they're doing the line, we're not going to be able to tie in the old line that we have. So we have to put a new line.
And that's good to know, because I know one of the water meetings I attended, and they said we would have the choice of replacing it, and that may just be homeowners that have that choice, I don't know.
I don't think homeowners either.
Homeowners may not either, okay.
I think they all have the choice.
But I think we need to, we need to be, I agree, we need to be prepared, so...
The other thing, too, is we have to put that out to bed. I don't think we can just select somebody, not to, not that we're going to...
No, I mean, I think we should definitely get different, whether it's a formal bid or at least, yeah.
And a budgeting, up and down.
And when would the bidding...
Well, we'd have to know when we're doing it.
Well, that's another issue that is up in the air, is when this project might be completed, like it might be completed within this fiscal year, and then that's really key at that point.
Well, it's one thing if it could work.
Interesting, yeah, you're right, it could be this fiscal year. Yeah, very, during the spring.
Very likely could be this fiscal year.
I see, uh-huh.
So, there's that.
Well, that's good to keep in mind as we move forward on this year. Yes.
I would still leave it to homeowners there, though.
Oh, I, I agree, what are the board's feelings?
We don't have any idea really as to what the problem is, but...
And, and, again, depending on when it's done, it could mean July rather than June, or, you know, could, or May. If it's in next year's, if we have it in next year's budget, we'll have to just see what...
Also, and I unfortunately took my binder for my budget committee meetings out of my bag right before I came here. We got figures for what, you know, if the budget that they propose is passed as is, what the bills will look like. I can't remember the exact figures, but I want to say it was something like a 60% increase. Just so...
What?
Yes.
And you can see, we went up, we went up, we did not go up anywhere near 60%.
So we may want to revisit that one. This is a lot of... This is a proposed budget, it's not final by any means, but that was their estimate based on the budget they put out.
And, and you know, is that a one-time, one-year's increase to pay for the project in one year, or don't we know?
I don't know. I think it would have to be if it were 60%. So there, the proposal is to bond, I'm not sure if bond is the right term, but get a, basically get a loan for the amount of work that they need to do, and then distribute it over five years, I believe it was. So that is the rate based on that plan. So at least five years, right, presumably?
So should we raise water and sewer to 6,000?
6,080.
You think it's 60% maybe?
I would say 6, I'd say 6,000, and then figure out what it actually would be.
At the time that the pipe is replaced, we will also be getting a new meter. Our meter is like original equipment. Therefore, it will become more accurate when our pipes are replaced. I don't expect our price to go, of water, to go down. So, this is, this is a...
I would, I would suggest, I'll make the recommendation that we raise that number to 6,000, to just be, you know, prepared.
We have to.
To make up what the water is, electric, or act it, that'd be anyway, so...
So another 15% or something like that? We have, and as, as, as Emily's pointed out, or what was it, or it could be this fiscal year, so we have to... And by keeping in mind that, um...
Yeah, it's hard to track a few years and when things happen.
Emily, they said it would be, when would that start, though? When would that rate start?
Presumably upon their next, you know, budgets, the first billing cycle of their next budget, right?
Absolutely.
So March, so it may, yeah.
Well, no, it, well, it depends on how they decide to do it, but their fiscal year is January to December. So it could hit us, it won't hit us in our January bill, because their budget won't be passed until March, but...
Theoretically, March or...
Yeah, but then they did year one.
I would still suggest raising it to six, and then if it's, yeah, or if it's, you know, maybe we'll get lucky, it won't be that much, but still, we will have them under that. We could justify, we have a ton of other increases here.
Yeah, and we can look at, and we can maybe look at some other stuff.
Just get rid of March.
Well, one of the things... Well, this is the page we may want to come back to if we think we want to make any further cuts, so...
Well, we're right there.
So we're here, so let's, yeah, we're right there, so...
I know we talked about the shed last meeting, and I don't know that we came to a conclusion about...
I wasn't there.
Right, let's have the discussion here.
Or we needed to sort of pull out the stuff in the attic first, and then...
Or even if we...
How big a shed are we talking about?
Well, I will, Dick is right here to jump in, but it could be, you know, it could be a portable shed, it could be something that gets rented, it is for...
Give me the Reader's Digest version of the discussion.
We have a multiple of props and whatnot from the ground upstairs. Takes up a pretty big area there. Some of that probably needs to be called down. You need probably an area, I think, like a 20-foot by 10-foot box.
Yeah.
A wall-off box, so to speak.
Does it need to be waterproof?
It shouldn't be.
If you want the props to continue.
I was gonna say, I mean, that's, you know, you just put some plastic that together. It's an annual.
Because right now, it's in the attic.
So the cost was...
5,000. And I think as we look at this, there are, there are some things that are nice to have still on this list that we, that we left there. Something did come off, something big did come off on the lower part, yes, on the lower part.
Basement doors?
We removed the windows in the gym.
Right, that's what, that's what...
And we removed the, we only did the treads of the stairs and not the whole thing.
You removed the windows from the gym?
Well, we'll get to that in a minute. I know windows and, and so we're...
The front, the north part, that's, that's just a, it's like a sim.
Yes, we're gonna get to that, we're gonna get to that in a minute.
Are those the ones they want to replace?
But in terms of, in terms of the maintenance part, so the, I think there are some sort of nice to haves, which is the curving before the parking lot areas. And I understand, believe me, I don't like people driving on my lawn either, but I think it's a nice to have. And the storage shed, there's a part of me that just is a little bit concerned that maybe we should have built a bigger shed two years ago, or whenever it was, and it was controversial enough in the neighborhood, building that shed. Put another shed up now seems a little, just seems a little quick.
Well, they're not the same thing. That's, that's not a waterproof shed.
Oh, yes it is.
The one we have out there is waterproof. So you don't get any moisture at all? All right, I wasn't sure, it just seemed like a...
It's a metal building, yeah.
It sounds to me like we might be able to further assess the contents of the attic, other space, before we make a decision about that.
That's an experience.
Let's, let's have, let's have one conversation at a time. Go ahead, and wait a minute, Tom.
It just strikes me that maybe we could probably, it sounds like there are some things that could probably get tossed, that there are some things that maybe could find other homes. So maybe we could do some of that work prior to building a shed.
And maybe some of that work has been done.
Yeah, I didn't imply that. I bet probably a lot of it hasn't been done yet.
But I know we're in the process of letting that out, and, and Tom, I know you have, I know you're quite interested in the building, and I think, I think Rich and Dick and you've all been involved too in some building stuff, and it would be nice to have a board member get involved with that kind of stuff.
I'd be more than happy to. Can I ask you a question, though? How much room is still out in that shed? I know it's pretty full, it was, really.
But we're gonna clear up all the fan space, because we're gonna put, hopefully, we're gonna put fans in every room rather than have all these standing fans with cords running across all of them.
I'll install them all.
Yeah, I would say if we could hold off on the shed.
Yeah.
And curving perhaps as well.
Maybe we could have like a subcommittee of me, Dick, to figure out the needs.
Well, I just know that you have a real interest in the building. Notice, notice that there's window shade replacement further down here, and I know, that's one of your pet peeves, and that we should talk more about that, too. And Dick has some ideas on the windows in the, in the gym, but right now, there's nothing on here for them, because it would be good to have those discussions and the costs.
I apologize for not being at the last.
Hey, life happens.
Yeah, we did talk about, I mean, if we want to try to prioritize items, what you see is, you know...
That bottom section, that's numbered 1 through 13, those are priorities.
They are, okay, thank you, that's good information.
Was there anything else that was discussed on this list last time that people wanted to get away with?
Well, I think, I think on the, on the maintenance one here, the top one here, we're talking about the curving and the shed, and then down below, if they are indeed prioritized, we left on the window shades knowing that they were a high priority for you, Tom. Probably that. The replacement doors from the gym, I think, one of the things that I'm, that I'm very pleased to see is happening is that, one of the things that it's on here is being able to lock off this corridor and be able to lock off the gym, so that when there are meetings or the gym's being used, people coming in don't have access to the whole building. I think that's a very good thing to see, and that's, and that's, these doors and things that are coming in that would allow that to happen. And I'm just wondering if we could even cut down, like just do the doors on the backside of the gym first, and not the ones up here, not the ones up here first, and, so, I don't know, I'm just throwing some of that out, so...
There's also a town administrative to have a recreation director for the town, who would be in charge of the Camp Raleigh and their senior programming that's going on. And I know that the rec committee expressed a lot of interest in... And I know that the rec committee expressed a lot of interest in using the gym space and more frequently with kind of that.
Even going further.
Yeah. Um, so I think being that that seems to be something that the town is trying to do, I see a lot of really great opportunities for that and, and working with the school and things. I feel like the replacement doors are kind of, are important because I would like to see that.
Because it would just...
Because it makes it more secure.
Yeah, I agree.
And it protects the school in that event.
Just, just so I'm clear on that top section, are we making adjustments or are we not? Just so, just so we know what we're doing.
Yeah.
And just because we're putting in that forty thousand dollars, I think, to the locker room, I think we need to make a little...
All right, so I think, it sounds like we have consensus on removing the shed. Something that we can revisit at the end of this year if necessary. You're looking for more...
End of the fiscal year? Mm-hmm. End of the school year or end of like December of twenty twenty?
Oh, no, I, I meant, you know, there are things that, that, you know, at the end of the year, sometimes we don't have to spend some of the things we don't spend.
Right, which was gonna be my point. I had a question though. Where was this shed gonna go exactly?
They're gonna probably slide it right next to where I am for the building right now.
Okay. It's not, it's not gonna take away any parking or anything?
Not affect parking at all.
And it would be twenty by what?
Probably about twenty by ten.
How does that compare to the ones out there already size wise?
It's twenty by, twenty four by thirty.
Okay. Thanks.
And we've built out, we've got the extended walls, so it's seven foot to nine.
Yeah, it's higher, yeah. Or you could do more, you could put shelving up. You have wood shelving or, or is it metal? Yeah.
Yeah. Take the floor, toy next to it.
And one of the things we discussed last time is that unfortunately, the fans can't be stacked. They actually, they take up a lot of floor space.
Yeah, that's true.
Because they're floor stands and, and that, that is gonna save some room out there. Maybe not enough for all the props.
Well, I mean, I, I think that we will all admit, we've, we've got a storage problem here, so I don't, while I understand the, you know, the, the cost, I would really, like I fought for the, the coup la, you know, wearing, save the coup la, t-shirts throughout town.
Build the shed.
Build the sheds, yeah. I would like to see us seriously consider that and put that sort of a, in the high priority list come the end of the year, the fiscal year, so that we can talk about that again. You've already costed that out, I take, and you're worried about all that.
That's a pretty, pretty estimate.
I, I think that makes sense, but I also think it makes sense that if we do it, I think we need to look overall at storage for the entire building.
Yeah, I agree.
And so that we're not doing it piecemeal. Because we did one so recently, it looks like we're starting to do things piecemeal and...
Well, also keep in mind that if you had built a bigger shed out there, it would probably look, it would be mess, it would be mess.
We wouldn't have put it there, it would have taken up some of our, I don't know, area to put something on. That was about as big as we could put without taking it away from, from other places in the property.
And that's, that's the one you're talking, the new one you're talking about?
Right, we have limited available space now.
All right, so it sounds like we have consensus that that will come off this year's budget.
Are we, the curving?
What about the curving? What people feel about it? I mean, obviously, I mean, the idea is people drive over the, they pay no attention to where the hardtop ends and the, yeah. It's, it's five thousand dollars. And obviously, it's not a, it's not a health issue, issue, it's not a safety issue, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a how nice a lawn, lawn do we want to present essentially? How nice, how nice an edge do we even want? Is what it sounds like. There are other opinions, so...
Everybody grant post.
Everyone's gonna, everyone's gonna come in and complain about wrecking their cars.
I did back into the mailbox one night out there and I, my car still has the, oh, that's neat.
I don't know, I, I feel that, um, I don't know, I don't know.
You guys aren't gonna give me my shed.
Right, I just feel it's a nice to have and, and, you know, but...
See, the difference is the shed's not a nice to have, shed is something that we would absolutely fill, I'm sure, to the brim. The curving, yeah, I, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you're right, as far as priorities go, I would, the shed should come before.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, in that case, is there consensus that we remove the curving from this year's budget, from next year, excuse me, next year's budget? We are talking just that side of the building, correct?
I guess. With looking into the future a little bit, are these, you know, are we going to have similar expenses? You know, we're not gonna have the forty thousand dollars in the next time we come talk about a budget.
Right.
So do we say, you know what, we're gonna put forty thousand dollars for a pipe this year and we just can't do the curving of the shed? And we hope that the next year, we don't have some other random forty thousand dollars in the future?
It's an old building, things will crop up, as we know. But, but on the other hand, on the other hand, I think it's, I think that that, it makes sense to remove things that we don't think are, are, don't seem to move us forward necessarily.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one thing is decorative, the other thing is reduce. You're never gonna store anything.
It's back to the shed, by the way.
I know, but the shed, but it's just that we just did the shed, so, yeah.
Why do we have so much stuff? That's a good question, like, we've lived this long, though, it's just, why is there so much more stuff now than there was, you know?
Well, I think private we may do.
I know my house is like that too, right? But sometimes you have to just get rid of stuff and...
You need a shed.
I do have a shed. It's very full.
Well, I would advocate for removing both of those items.
I, I would agree at this point, at this point. And again, it, it's, it's hard to be budgeting for a year out, you know? So again, by consensus on the curving, is that, is that true?
Yes.
All right, I'm good on the curve.
So we'll be removing the curving and removing the shed, which at this point saves us ten, ten thousand dollars, takes ten thousand dollars off.
I am gonna come in here with a shirt and says, see if there's a shed.
Build the shed.
And then as we look down below, um, so, so, and these are in priority order down below, which is, which is good to know. So I did have a, I did have a question, I had a question on all the window shades. So this is replacing window shades on windows that sometime in the future will be replaced, correct?
Correct.
And, and maybe not even a long time in the future, maybe hopefully, because it's the old building pretty much, it's the original building, right? And so by, by putting new shades on old windows, are we just creating an extra expense two years from now or a year from now? Will we, will we be getting around to replacing some of those windows or, or not?
Well, that would depend on what you really want to do with the window. The shed, the shades that I'm looking at will fill the present opening all the way to the top as opposed to the ones we have now, which is going to the top of the ceiling. Because the ceiling was dropped straight with the windows, so the eighteen inch difference in the window because it wasn't properly, the ceiling really wasn't properly put in, it should have been angled up at the window and the shade would have come all the way down.
We're talking about that side?
That side of the window. And there are shades that, there are no shades on this side of the wooden building yet, so these are all proven to be brand new ones.
But these are all brand new windows, so, so I, so I feel really good about putting shades on these.
Well, I have to say something else. I think it's, it's not just the, the look, because it does look like crap, but it's also the safety, because those, some of those folks have to climb up to close and open those, those shades. And that doesn't seem like the, you know, we don't want, you know, Ms. Cook to, you know, do a header off the, off of the, of a desk because she's trying to shut the shades down. I looked at it, I'm like, I, I, this is, this is not, not good, so...
The shades are looking at are similar to the chain driven, as we have in the gym. So those are the ones that would be going in.
But as far as I know, that one, those ones over there, there were a couple that they had to basically climb up to, to adjust.
There's a, there's a lot of peripheral things in the way of the windows.
Pretty soon, no fans though.
Boy, you're really wrong.
No, no, I, I really, I liked, I, because I, the, the explanation on why we need fans in the room is fabulous.
We need a fan shed.
Well, we need now, but we're not going to need it. We're gonna have lots of, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to sell the fans, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a fan sale.
Money added revenue for the fans. Really even want us to recycle the fans.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, but is, the question I think is, if we replace all the window shades for ten thousand dollars, are we gonna have to return around and spend that ten thousand dollars again?
It won't be that much probably.
Did you talk about replacing the shades or the window?
The shades are all the shades, right? So these are the items.
Well, one of the items is replacing the shades, but right at some point, we're talking about more window replacement.
Yeah, we cut that out of the last...
Okay.
Ten thousand dollars for the gym. But, but in, in the original building, the windows are the original windows, I think. No, they're not, that's right, that's right, they were, they were, but they're also, they're, they remain very heavy. They are also a safety issue, I believe. They are very heavy, they're difficult to open and close in the original building, in the old building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
And that's...
But we haven't had any discussion, I don't recall there ever being a discussion about replacing those windows, at least not in this decade.
Perhaps that's something as you become part of the building community.
That's, I'm not sure.
You can bring back to us.
Oh, yeah. Every...
I mean, I, I agree, window, window shades are important. I mean, they're important for the sun coming in because we don't have this building piece up, although, when, once the brick gets hot.
And again, I, I meant what I said about the whole safety thing. We don't want somebody getting hurt because they're trying to close the shade, so, and it could happen, so... Fight, fight. Still gonna fight for that shed.
Can I just say, on the internal doors for the annex hallway, are they going to, will those doors be placed beyond the bathroom so the bathrooms are available to, to, to the gym and...
Where, where, where are we at now?
The internal doors.
The annex.
They will be on this side, just outside of this door in the library, so it will, the bathrooms will be available to anyone using the gym.
Yep, perfect. I just wanted to double check that. All right, then, so any, anyone else on, on the, on the other list here, questions?
So we're taking off the curving and the shed?
Shed.
Yeah.
But everything under...
We were, we were down here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm...
Don't worry, next year, we're getting a shadier shed.
So that was just, so we were taking ten grand off that total?
We, we are.
Yes.
Watch your pronouns.
You.
We already did that, we discussed it.
I yield the balance of my...
Thank you, Andrew. Who's gonna want, yeah, I mean, the real fact that they'll jump over my pronouns. From Locust Street, okay.
But everything else, just so I'm clear, under maintenance repairs is stacked.
Everything else stacked.
Some of us are taking a deep breath, but...
Yeah.
Well, let's, we'll, 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 we'll double check that before we leave the budget discussion. All right. Now we're gonna move on to discuss it, but are you, are you ready?
Are we ready for page eight?
Oh, page eight.
I don't think anything else has changed since the last time, but...
Just as the final questions, the transportation, you can see the adjustments that were made, special ed high school was a reduction for transportation. And then again, not much on eight and nine, so...
I did have a question on the, the transportation. I know that we don't have much of a choice or any choice that we contract with, but is that a sort of a normal increase that you see from them?
Yeah, so this is your, next year is your last year of this contract.
Okay.
So next year, we'll be going back out to bid for transportation, so this is the last year of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Special ed though, we're going out for next year, so these are based right now on that map.
Okay.
But we only got one bid back, so we're going back out to bid for that, see if we can get one.
So the, the transportation for field trips is on top of that administrative cost?
Yeah, because this is strictly transportation, the other was more like a registration fee than those types of things.
So with that, if, if my math is correct, that's a reduction in your budget of thirty thousand, which was twelve.
Now you're going back to the first page.
Did you add in the lumber and sewer?
I did.
So instead of twenty two, it's thirty?
I did it the old fashioned way.
So it's about an eight thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, it should be additional eighty five hundred, right?
Yeah.
Eighty five hundred. Thirty thousand, that's twelve, is that?
Yeah.
Which, as we look back... Makes up a little bit more for the loss of revenue.
I will, um, just again, for informational sake, the process of the budget committee went through last night with the, um, budgets that we reviewed, we looked very closely at the actuals and compared the actuals to what's proposed and looked at the trend there. So I think that's something that we should...
I would just be forewarned, ours are gonna look a little skewed because we made all those adjustments in the current year, so a lot of the lines, we do not have actuals because they were all lumped together. So that's gonna be difficult.
But, but I'll talk to that during our presentation.
But that's good to know.
I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna tag team this and we'll bring up why things are up, why things are down, what the reductions look like. Um, you know, the, the, we'll hit on all of the large either increases and decreases, so it'll be pretty clear. And anything that we have history, I mean, we've got a brief history on, on some things, but as we go into, you know, the next couple of years, we'll have a much clearer history. We'll be able to do three, four years.
Because like the supply lines, if you collapsed them all together, you'd be able to see that actual, but you won't be able to individually, because it's broken out by department.
Right, and we explained that last year, that we would detail it out for better transparency.
Can we ask a question before we shut this whole thing down? Were there any other things as far as maintenance and new projects and things that we just didn't consider for this year that were being discussed? Anything else that was on this list before it was cut off?
I mean, maybe before the board saw it?
Yeah. Was there anything out there though, you know?
Because of the cutoff, I didn't get on this.
Right, I mean, the only reason I bring this up is because, you know, this is the time where we should be, I mean, we don't wanna spend the money, but sometimes we just have to spend money. If there's something out there that we're, you know, was kind of bubbling under this list, just didn't quite make it, that you're considering or you were thinking about or had priced out for consideration, was there anything else that was left off?
I think what we meant, we sort of prioritized, you know, and I leaned on Dick to say, you know, these are the next things, you know, we finished a lot last year, we finished a lot over the summer, plus we also wanted to be reasonable too.
Yeah, because in the past, especially with like technology, I mean, I know every year I'd scream and yell that we should have, you know, if there's something that we're, you know, thinking about, because, you know, I know this stuff becomes obsolete quickly. There might be something out there that the teachers feel would be a, a good, you know, opportunity for the kids here that we, you know, may have priced out, may have thought about, just didn't want to, you know, because it costs money. But if, in the case of these things, and, you know, I know, we're talking about curbs and sheds and shades. Make a song, curbs and sheds and shades.
Tom, I mean.
But it's like, I just, I think, we're here now, we're talking about this, we're cutting money out of the budget. So is there something more that maybe we were thinking about?
If you look at the list under the maintenance repairs, all but one or two are directly related to safety and security of this building. That's what we focused on. You know, once we got to a certain number monetarily, I mean, we covered just about all of the safety and security things that we had discussed.
I just would never want us to be afraid to bring something forward in our budget anytime that might be beneficial, that might be.
You know, absolutely, and I, I've been sort of light, but I'm, I'm serious, that I think it would be very important to have a school board member, and I think he would be the excellent person, to become an official part of.
Spending all your money this year.
Of the, of the, of the building stuff, because one of the discussions that we had last time had to do, you notice that there's money in there for the, for getting a ventilation system planned, that's just for the plan.
Right.
The system itself will be north of $400,000 to do it.
Yeah, it's an old building.
But it, but that's the type of thing that we have to look forward to doing, and then, four or five years after that, we have to look at doing the heating system, so it'd be great to have someone with your eye and concern for the building, as a part of that, so you can keep it in front of the board. And that we're planning toward it.
Thrilled to do it, I think it would be, you know, nice to, you know, to see, you know, kind of get the inner workings, the nuts and bolts of it. Because there, I'm sure there's stuff that, you know.
I don't get a sense that you guys feel as though you can't approach us with what you need.
No, I'm just saying, we're, we're concerned about dollars, let's, let's call it what it is. We're always conscious of dollars.
Yeah, but there's a balance.
But we've cut money out of this budget. I thought that, actually, I thought the budget was pretty good to begin with, but we've been running pretty close, you know, there isn't a lot of, there's not a lot of fat here. It's really just pretty close, I mean, and we've cut out, you know, 1,000 here, 800 there, but when you're talking about a larger number, and you have additional things on here that you're thinking about, it just makes me say, you know, why not? You know, it, it's not as though the stuff, especially the shed, I know, I'll get off the whole shed thing, but that's something that's useful, that's something that we would be using, it's not a, you know, we're not building a statue of rich
Not yet.
At the school. Not a paper mache.
No, I mean, it's, and I, it's good, and we may want to come back to it, we should probably run through the warrant articles that we're, that we're planning on having, and then, and then we'll, see if there's anything else you want to come back.
I thank you for just allowing the question, but it's just, when we're looking at that number, I'm saying, you know, we need to do reductions here, but is this stuff we want to really cut right out?
No, and you're, yeah. You've been, you've been very good at getting us to a lot of different places.
I am not a part of.
I would like to say, too, in our defense, last, this meeting, we also did decide to add in the budget an extra day for PE, so.
Oh, excellent, that's a great.
Working towards, you know.
That's outstanding.
Whether it's actual PE or a way to work in outside time, if we need to hire people to do, for recess duty or whatever, just, just to allow for more exercise, and it comes from one of our new, one of our new policies, that we, that we have to be doing those kinds of things, and we should be anyway, so.
And I love that that has to do with, like, the education of the children, too.
Yes, yes.
I'm very likely to put that name towards the education of the children, rather than keeping our law and policy, right? Though that's important. I do have a question about the transfer to capital reserve funds being zero, so I, like, while I understand how it works, I don't like get the 7501 was the actual, and the approved was 90.
Yes, so when you do the warrant articles, and they pass, and it becomes part of your budget. So the following year, there was warrant articles for $75,001, it was $1 to start the, the regular tuition account, and then the money to go into the capital reserves. The current year was $97,000, it was to the tuition money for $22,000, and the money to go into the trust funds.
Okay, so it's not actual, because we haven't spent it yet?
Yes, so when you get your budget updates in the current year, for, for this current year, right now, it shows nothing. We just finished our audit, now I will make the transfer from our regular account into those trust funds, and so then you'll see an actual of $97,000 in the current year's budget.
Okay.
For next year, it's zero, because the warrant article, it does not get added to your budget until the warrant articles pass, because if they don't pass, then they don't go in.
Okay, even though it says proposed.
Yeah, because it's a warrant article, you don't put it in, because it's a separate warrant article, just like your teacher contract's not included, because it's a separate warrant article, once they're approved, then they get added into your budget.
Right, but, do we have, wait, I don't know. But we have an estimate.
All that's in there is your current staff at what they're making now. Right, so the collective bargaining agreement would be on top of that. So your budget right now is down 32. And so our budget will change. It will. When that passes.
Right, so whatever that amount.
Try to be positive. Try to be positive in here.
So.
Be like that. So when you look at your warrant articles, the budget will be one number, that's the amount they're gonna approve for the budget, then the, then the teacher's contract is another amount, then these get to be another amount, those get added to your.
I understand why. I was just feeling like it was a little inconsistent, being that we have money in there for teachers, but.
You don't, you have current money.
Right, so even if they're, even if that warrant article doesn't pass, we still need to put this money in the budget.
We pay what they're currently paying.
Whereas if the transfer to capital reserve fund doesn't pass, then it's zero.
Right, that's correct.
Got it?
That's correct.
That makes sense.
And those have no tax impact either, because they come from.
Right, right, right.
Money that's left over from the current year.
Okay, that makes sense to me, why those two things were created.
And that's why your revenue is also changing by the $97,000, because that's the offset.
Right.
Is that, it is, I find that confusing, because it's almost offset by a year, it's, it gets very confused.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, and it's like, you know, I, I, they, they were lying, I was like, why is this treated this way, and this one's treated this way? But it totally makes sense, thank you.
I gave it to you in your budget packet, you have to print out.
I think it's in your packet, too, tonight, too.
For what?
The warrant articles.
Yes, they're in the back of your budget.
In your budget packet that I handed, I, had you pick up?
Yes, but Tom did not.
Oh, oh.
There's something one in there right now, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, here it is. Turn the page.
He's stealing mine.
I'm sorry, Pat, I know you.
No, no, no.
Pick it, I brought it with me, I didn't know you.
But he didn't choose.
You take it from the shed.
Nice, nice.
I have a packet of yours. That sounds old, here's.
All right, so we still have about a half an hour, so we'll get, try to get through these warrant articles, and if we get through them quickly.
There'll be one school board member.
No, there's two, and they are.
Oh, but I have to change that one to.
Oh, and they are Andrea and Lauren.
Wow.
I changed the.
They are.
America, but I didn't change the word.
Andrea will not be, we're running, I'm sorry.
What? All right, well, thank you for that. Thank you for that.
We've heard that before.
No, no, it's, I, I understood, I think you stayed on longer than you anticipated, and it's been all appreciated. Tom can say that, as the longest reigning.
He has the main.
He reigns, he reigns, ma'am. So the budget we've just been over, the default budget, which will also change now with the changes we've made. So, does everyone have that budget page? So as we turn the page, the collective bargaining agreement, we will be having a non-public, if we have time, maybe before our meeting, and if not after, before our meeting, to discuss where the negotiations stand, what we're doing there. So we don't know what that is, but I, we anticipate at this moment having one.
Yeah, I just put in the language for now, then I can add in the figures later on.
Beyond that, there were no large, there were no article, there were no, there was nothing, we moved out of maintenance to a, to a warrant article, because we want to be able to do them if we have the money to do them, so, so we chose not to move anything. Last time we met, to a, to a warrant article, and I think we're sticking with that. And so the other two are the, other two that we had last year, Article 7, which was the, the regular education expendable fund, so that's for tuition.
That's two, I put two kids in, I didn't know what you wanted, but I put that as a place.
Two is what we did last time, I believe.
Yep.
Which we did, this gives us four, should it pass?
Yep, and I adjusted it just a little bit by the increase in tuition.
Yep, and then, and then we are continuing to try to build up our, our building fund. We have not increased our sped fund, and that is currently at, I already have it here.
Yep, it's 156,605.
And, you know, you can look to Nancy or Bob to, to say, right now, we have not had to use it, we've never used it in my time on the board, I don't know if Tom or you, we've never, so we've never had to dip into it, we feel that that's reasonable for now, but we would.
Yeah, 156,000, I think that's, that's safe, I, I wouldn't recommend putting any more in right now.
So that, that, we stopped putting in, I think, last year or the year before.
So that's sound reasonable, Nancy.
And then I left the building fund at 75, because I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and I, I would say, if we have.
Right now, the building fund is 180,100, however, I'm moving that 75,000 in as well, so that will add to it.
And remember, we are looking at some very big, some very big ones.
And then you'll have the $22,100 in the, the regular tuition.
Whereas that transfer is done.
And that will, for the folks at home, require us to put a warrant to use the money bank, so that's just.
Yes.
It's really just.
For the building fund, not for the tuition fund, that is under our control. All right, so the last thing to discuss.
And then I also, I have not put, I did not put the SAU withdrawal on here, you notice it's not on here? We're waiting for, we're waiting for language from the attorney for that, so that will get added as well.
I don't know where my head is.
I actually woke up out of a sound sleep over the weekend, and said, you're right, I did not put the SAU withdrawal on there.
Plus, we get all.
So that will come, too, we're just waiting for the language.
And for those of you, we'll be giving an update at the beginning of our next meeting, but we, we have a tentative agreement, a draft agreement with Somersworth, Ronsford and Somersworth, and it has been included in the plan that got sent to the state.
Yeah, we're gonna be speaking to that in a regular meeting.
Paul, give us enough data on that.
Do you want something else?
Well, I don't, I don't know if we want to have this discussion or not, I, so one of the things we asked Bob to do was to put together the cost of sending, sending sixth grade to Marshwood next year. And I think he did a fabulous job with it, looking at this.
It's in the board packet.
This is also on your agenda for your regular meeting, so.
I feel like we should have it there.
Okay, then, but then we'll put that off for the regular.
Depending on, depending on how that goes, obviously, we can adjust the warrant, warrant articles accordingly. So if you decide to go in that route, we'll go on, and if you decide in your meeting not to, then we won't.
Okay, we can leave it to him, I, I feel that I may, I'm sure to do that. Okay, me too. Okay, all right, in that case, then, we will take a short adjournment while we go into, so, just, I will make those adjustments, I will email the budget committee electronic copy, do you guys want to see it first, before I send it to them? Do you want me to CC you when I send it to them? I know you want them to have it ahead of time, so I can do that. I think if, I think if you send it, and CC us, because then we'll have it, we'll have, we won't have to, we won't have to get an extra hard copy for, for Ron.
And then my plan was Monday, get all the binders done and brought over to Town Hall for them to pick up. In preparation for Wednesday meeting.
Thank you very much, I know it's been, I know it's been.
A lot going on.
It takes good.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, Bob's been, yes, it's always good to have the superhead over spring in your ear.
Oh, one more thing, too, I did email the attorney today to, for them to be at our deliberative session, so that's all set up as well.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are going into a non-meeting, so.
I have mine now, he gave it back to me.
Does Tom want to get?
We'll be back at six thirty.
We'll be back this year. Yes, all right, we are, we're a few minutes past time, so we'll call the meeting to order, please, with a roll call.
Judy Nelson.
Yes, Tom.
Emily Lee. Andrea Anderson. Erin.
Here. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comments by visitors to open the meeting, any comments by visitors?
I have a comment, I just have to say. I'll worry about it. In reference to the shed, we do try to get rid of play props, as we don't need them, but the money for those play props comes from RAF, so we don't buy things lightly, and to just be disposed of, that's the most part, we buy them to keep them, to use them for another play. So it's not that, since Amanda and Jean have done the pledge, that we've just accumulated all of this stuff that we never use, we do try to use it over.
Any other, any other comments? All right, we will move forward. On consent calendar, right now, this, it is our budget workshop meeting session from last time, and our school board minutes. What is the board, what would the board like to do with the consent calendar? We have a.
One question on the minutes.
Is it a correction, or is it a question?
Potentially both.
All right, I'll, all right, then, which ones, with the board meeting, the board?
The budget, because it's page 30.
The budget minutes, we'll, we'll pull them out and discuss them, we'll put it down to discussion. It's the school.
The report.
School board budget meeting. All right, so we're, we're gonna remove the budget meeting, but leave in the.
I have a correction for the, the board meeting minutes.
Is it truly just a correction, or do you have to just be emailed?
Oh, okay, then I'll.
If it's truly just a correction.
It is.
It doesn't change the meaning, just the wrong name, okay. Oh, yeah, I thought I saw one doing it. So the correction, the correction can be emailed over. No to.
Well, she emailed them to you, right, Bob?
Yeah, she sent it to me.
Yeah, we can correct them at the office.
All right, but we remove the budget workshop, and we're gonna move those down to under discussion. And so now, a motion to accept the school board meeting minutes as corrected. Motion by Tom, scheduled by Erin, all in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Announcements, we'll start with, notifications will start with Dr. Gdodomski.
Thank you, a few dates to start off with, and I see one of them is at the, at the end, but for budget presentations, on December 11, 6:30 is the budget presentation to the budget committee. January 12 is your budget hearing, scheduled for 9:00 AM.
The 11th, the 11th, it's Saturday?
Oops, sorry, did I have the wrong date?
It's a Saturday, the 11th, right.
January 11. Budget hearing, January 11 at 9:00 AM, and we've got February 4 for the deliberative session at 6:00 PM, so just a couple of dates to, to keep in mind. As you know, we did have two snow days, coupled with the one loss of, a day for loss of electricity, so we're at three days so far that we're adding on to the end of the year. I've been in touch with the bus company, and we're reviewing a number of bus stops for safety as the snowbanks start climbing a little bit. One in particular is the, the stop right downtown by the mills. To, actually, I'm gonna try to get over there tomorrow to review that one, and see where the snowbanks are, and see if it's still safe for the bus to get in there and turn around, it's, it's a little cramped, but we're reviewing those. A reminder that we have the SAU board meeting next Monday, December 9 at 6:30, that's with the budget hearing, as well as the public hearing, as well as the board meeting, so an important one for board members to put on their calendar. And the withdrawal plan. And the withdrawal plan, that has been completed. We have a contract with, to do the services with Summersworth. That's been included in the plan. That's been submitted to the state, and it's on their agenda for the State Board meeting on December twelfth. I'll be going down to that in case there are any questions that they may have. But they have a plan and a contract and everything all together, so hopefully that will move through fairly quickly on the twelfth. And that's all I have for tonight.
So without coming in on the twelfth, we would have, we need to finalize warrants and everything. We give us time to finalize warrants, but we will need a meeting. I think, I think we do, yeah, we meet January nine, so we have time to finalize all that stuff that are, that are missing. Double checking the timing of it all.
Yep, we'll, we'll rough in a, as soon as I get the language from the attorney, we'll rough in a warrant article and have it ready. And if that goes successfully on the twelfth, which I anticipate it will, then we'll have that ready on the warrant articles.
Thank you. Anything further?
That's all I have.
Want to do something?
My report's a little bit short. As you may have noticed, the bills due six days after our last meeting somewhere. But just to highlight a couple of things, we did have student-led conferences in between meetings. Students prepared their portfolios, some did PowerPoint presentations, some had binders at work, and the conferences were really well-attended. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from parents as they were coming to the halls and checking out their kids. So, another year of those finished very well-attended. Not everybody comes, but for the most part, we've got a majority of parents to come and listen to their kids about what they're learning. We, due to the snow days, we postponed our lines, a lot of revision screening for our students each year. They're supposed to come on Monday, but they'll be here tomorrow. Something that's pretty beneficial, it's a free service that they give to us. Gives us screening for kids, and if there's anything that pops up, then we send home reports to parents and let them know that something might be of a concern, that they can send an appointment with their vision specialist. The other thing that was postponed was, we do math assessments each year, a couple of times each year. Tracy Sager, as you know, was our math consultant for a number of years. Our teachers do a math assessment that really digs into how kids solve problems and what their thought processes are in solving, so that they have an idea of, you know, what skills that they have and what skills that they might need more work on during math classes. It really taps into the kid's thinking and problem-solving skills. So, they've completed all the assessments. One of the things that Tracy did with us last year was have a follow-up meeting with the teachers to review the data and, you know, sort of see what the patterns are, see if things change from current to current. Deb Nichols had been trained pretty well from Tracy Sager. And Lindsay Lanzier job shadowed her yet last year when she was here, so the two of them are gonna facilitate those meetings tomorrow for us. And the teachers are looking forward to having that time to collaborate and, you know, with this department and that. The other thing is that, just sort of a clarification, I've been sort of holding off on this, but there's been a lot of talk about science, and what do we teach for science? And how often do you have science classes? We don't particularly call science, science here. You know, the philosophy that a number of years ago turned into inquiry-based learning. And through inquiry, we cover all subject areas. And a lot of our science classes, per se, come through inquiry lessons. Just some examples, in my year and a half here, we've had kids in the river, you know, looking at, you know, different species and categorizing species, collaborating, you know, older students with younger students. We've had kids do studies on ecosystems. We've had, I've seen a couple of weather lessons in my travels around the building. I know Mr. Conde is preparing some lessons around electricity and how electricity works and how it's conducted. So we do a lot of science, we just don't call it science. So there's, I just want that, you know, clarification out there that, you know, it's not that we don't do it, we just don't call it science. It's part of what we do here, and it's sort of steered, you know, into interest areas. And sometimes they'll start a whole unit on one thing, and the kid's interest will take off on another topic completely, and that's what they'll go on to next. And the learning that happens, I think, is just as valuable as we set aside forty-five minutes a day to teach science and use a textbook. The value in their learning is so much more beneficial here than I've ever seen in a science class from elementary schools. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's great information, especially coming from you being new, coming into situations. You know, maybe you had reservations, but you don't now, so that's great.
Yeah, I didn't have reservations, I just held off based on some of the comments with, you know, the sixth grade decision-making and that. Comments started coming up, and we had a few, you know, student-led conferences, and teachers coming to me expressing concern that, and we teach science, we just don't call it that. So I, I thought this might be the appropriate time to make a public statement on their behalf.
It, it is appreciated, and I think it's also, and I'm sure it happens from time to time, to take the opportunity when someone says, wow, it was so easy to, to climb up this ramp, rather than going up the ladder and saying, yes, science, physics. You know, it's, it's great to have someone just say, oh, yeah, guess what that's due to? And I'm sure that happens from time to time. Thank you, it is good to hear that. Anything further?
That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm gonna, um, yeah, thank you. I'm gonna stop for just a minute and just acknowledge that a, a man who served this town for over four decades, maybe five decades, Ed Jansen, died last week. And his claim to fame, I think, right now, for, for the immediate, for the Rollinsford School District, is that two years ago, he really, he saw the value of the teachers' contract, of the collective bargaining agreement. He saw the value of the teachers taking a lower health plan, which saved the town a great deal of money, and he was instrumental in getting that collective bargaining agreement passed that year, which allowed all of our teachers to be on the proper step where they belong. I mean, they, they, but they, but they also gave a value to the town, which he, as an economist, said, we're gonna realize those savings year after year after year. And he swayed the Budget Committee, and that collective bargaining agreement passed after six years of no collective bargaining agreement. So, we as a district owe him that, his thanks for that. He'll be missed. And now we'll move forward, and Josie is here, representing all the students, apparently. Nick couldn't make it tonight. Apparently Nick is celebrating his eighteenth birthday this evening.
Not at the school board meeting?
I got, I got word, in a roundabout way, saying, if Nick should make it, it's his eighteenth birthday, so, anyway. Apparently, because you were very happy to have you. And so, do you have a report for us from, from your, from Marchwood?
Well, I know the band and chorus winter concerts are coming up. The chorus concert is Monday, and band concert is next Friday. The middle school musical is starting up. The first meeting was yesterday. I know basketball is also happening. There's a newspaper club that was started recently, and they asked the eighth grade for new ideas. And I think they might have asked the other grades, too. There's a dance tomorrow, and...
The district pledge is finished?
Yes.
There were a lot of Rollinsford kids.
The district musical and, I think, a couple weeks ago. The Friday before winter break, the eighth grade is doing a community service day, where we plan and help out with activities for the third graders from the central school. And there's a food drive every day this week with a different theme.
So there's a lot going on. Did you, did you put any suggestions in for the name of the newspaper?
I did.
And when will you know if your suggestion wins?
I'm not sure.
And what is the middle, middle school musical?
Um, we believe we are junior.
Awesome.
Oh, there's a junior edition. Any other questions for Josie? Did you find out what's going on?
How do you like the middle school?
I feel like it's very big. Slightly over one meter. It's very different from here, because you move classes and rooms. But I feel like most people adjusted fairly well, fairly quickly.
That's good. Good to have you on board. Now, Josie, you are, of course, welcome to stay for the entire meeting. You can see how exciting it is. But we also know that you're a very busy young woman, and so you are also free to leave. And believe me, most of our student reps just get up and leave. So you won't be, you won't be upsetting us if you get up and leave. But thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Oh, that's right.
Early morning.
Very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right, discussion items. We have removed the budget work session minutes, so we'll go back to, we'll go to those for discussion.
Yeah, I have a question on page three, the first full paragraph. In the middle, I think we're talking about the, putting the new line in from the, from the road to the school here. And it says in the middle of that paragraph, the question was raised to increase the expense to four, comma, five, zero, zero, zero.
Oh, gross, yeah.
And I wasn't, and I'm assuming that was forty-five thousand?
No, it was forty-five hundred for the water and sewer usage line. It's four thousand dollars.
For the water and sewer utilities, and I'll agree. Okay, thank you. I was like, trying to figure out whether if a pipeline was supposed to go from forty to forty-five thousand or whether we increase the utility line by seven hundred dollars to forty-five hundred.
And we increased it again tonight.
Yeah, increase it to six thousand, got it. Okay, thank you, that was my...
It's a good understanding.
Question.
So it's really just an extra zero always added to it?
Yeah, because I wasn't at the meeting, so I was reading this to get up to date, and I was like, oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, good. Anything else?
No.
So my question about these minutes, Andrea and I were in attendance, and it looks like all of the comments are attributed to me. And I don't disagree with any of them, but Andrea definitely said a lot of things.
I thought I actually spoke, but I wasn't, I didn't wanna like...
So, I don't know if we need to correct that, like, I don't, I mean, I definitely didn't say all these things. I don't disagree with them.
And it's true, we can't go back and figure out who said what, unless we look at the film. But, um...
And she has it on Kate, too.
Yeah.
Also, Kate is not saying this stuff on the ground.
I was, I was thinking that, too, but I didn't, I didn't know if I needed to say. I think I said some of these things, but...
I think I, I think I know the ones that I actually said, so, I don't know if it's helpful, but I just sent it along.
I think that, as long as the content is accurate...
That's in the policy. It doesn't have to say exactly which of us spoke it's accurate, it's the content.
Okay.
If the content is accurate, if you can just email me the ones that you think you should be in, I'll just switch that.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm okay, as long as you don't stick me with something, something to get me mad.
Well, it's like a very controversial, anything.
Rather than having someone go back and listen to this.
And, and another possible correction is simply to change any of the last names. Kavanaugh, Anderson, which apparently isn't in here. And, and just to say, no, you were here, just to say board, just to say board member.
Yeah, let's do that.
Oh, that's true, too.
So we know it's not, we know it's not Bob, or no, it's not...
I think that's fine.
That's fine, you noticed that, too.
I was like, why would I believe?
I think, I think that, that, that way we're covered for everything, and no one has to figure out exactly what. That's good, good, good catch, as well.
You are busy.
And, and as you know, I mean, we're, because of, because of, because of our usual minute taker not being available, people are scrambling to fill in, and they're doing a good job.
Much appreciated.
They don't know us as well as some other people do to get it, so it's perfectly understandable.
Absolutely, we are next to each other as well, so, and we can go there.
Go there, Katie, yeah.
But I know you all, so...
You know us all very well. Anyway, it was much appreciated, I thought a good job overall, we've done all the notes. All right, so let's go back and, and I'll take a motion to accept the board budget workshop, work session minutes as, as...
Correct. I need to accept the board budget workshop minutes as amended.
Second from Andrea, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so now the budget discussion for next year, we just had our, our workshop. So I don't think we have anything further to discuss on the operating budget there. We did not have a current year update, I think, because of the time, the timing moved so quickly here.
Nothing has changed from your meeting, yeah.
What I assumed, so...
I didn't just say your audit was completed, and there were, I think, did I mention that last time?
Might have said that.
I think it was in the warrants list.
Okay, everything was fine, no issues.
No made, no findings, okay. All right. So we'll go forward. We have no policies to read for the first time, and we have second reading policies, which are the video and audio surveillance on school property, minutes, and public comment and participation at board meetings.
I would just like to express my joy at the fact that the policy doesn't say any longer that we will retain video until they are erased. Really thrilled that we actually have an end of school year live for that. Good change.
Any further discussion on the, on the policies?
They look good.
All right, then we can accept, we might as well accept them as a group, but just, you can just say, I think, the policies included in the second reading section.
I make a motion to accept the policies from the second reading.
Second.
We have two seconds, I think Emily beat Erin by like one second, Tom.
No, because she says everything in the minute.
Actually, actually, your whole thing about the...
That's right, that's right.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Warrant articles discussion, we discussed, we discussed all the ones that were, that are going to go on, and remember, some that we've forgotten, the withdrawal, thank you. So I, I, I don't think there's anything else on that, if people want to.
Yeah, could we talk about the warrant article? I was wondering on the...
Yes, we're, we're gonna do that under old business, grade six to Marchwood discussion, we'll go under that.
Okay.
If that's all right?
Yep.
Because that's, that's next, if we're going to, if we're discussing the case. Okay, moving forward. All right, old business. So, grade six to Marchwood discussion. So one of the things that Bob provided was a very good, I think, cost breakdown. People have seen that, I think. It was in our... Yeah, I, I thought it was very thorough, with the projected number of students, with... So what it would cost to send sixth grade next school year. so what it would cost to send sixth grade next school year. The costs, the savings, the anticipated, and again, a lot of it is unknown, particularly special education, which is based on what we know today, not on what is going to happen next year. But the, but the cost that if we, as a school board, were doing it, and the cost that we would recommend that would be part of the budget, should we do anything with it, is three hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars.
It's three hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the tuition, sorry, sorry. So sorry, so sorry.
Yeah, if we use the chocolate.
So sorry.
Three twenty-six.
Three twenty-six.
Six hundred and fifty.
So while we'll now go through it a little bit so we understand.
First, I'm gonna deflect the credit for the clarity to Katie. She did a great job of putting this together. I appreciate that very much. To start off, we started with the tuition rate, and obviously, we have projected twenty-seven students. It's based on the current fifth grade, and we added four because we've already had at least two say that they are, that don't presently go to Rollinsburg, that would put their children in. So we felt that we needed to include a buffer there, if you will, a reminder that if that's not covered, then it comes out of your school, comes out of your local budget. So we felt that we needed to cover that sufficiently, especially tuition, again, is of the snapshot in time that we presently have with the appropriate number for that. So if you put all of the tuition together, it comes out to three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for tuition.
And that's just snapshot of the current fifth graders or?
Correct. Correct. And remember, this, these numbers are for next, a guesstimate for next year. That doesn't include the year after, the year after, that, and every year it's going to be in this ballpark, depending on enrollment. From that number of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, we calculated in seventy-one thousand, seven hundred dollars for an additional bus, because not only do you have to calculate in the numbers of bodies that are going on the bus, you have to also calculate in the time that they're gonna be on the bus as well. So if you save, again, we put that in there as well. We then reduced one classroom teacher, because obviously, we've got a grade level that's leaving, so we could reduce that teaching position, as well as one paraprofessional position. And that reduced from that figure a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seven thousand, a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. So from that, if you add all of those up and then take the reduction off there, the total figure for next year that would, we would recommend would go on the warrant article would be three hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So if there is a warrant article that is presented, that would be, in my mind, be appropriate figure for time. And just a reminder that that's for next year, and every year thereafter, you know, it would be a similar additional amount.
And it would be in the default budget at that point?
Yes.
So we would, thereafter, we would be obligated to pay that?
That's correct.
I feel strongly that this is, that it's premature. I think the day will come when we have to send, when we are likely to send our sixth grade to Marshwood. I feel strongly that that day will come. But it's premature, and I would, I would not feel comfortable asking the town to spend another three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year, next year, possibly even the year after, so close to a hundred, close to a million dollars, to send students that it's not necessary to send them yet. And I think as a board, we need to try to be responsible. We heard from the educators, that wasn't even, other things that enter in would be space needs here. We're doing okay. I think we haven't heard that we're really pressed for space, which would be a reason to send a sixth grade. That's not happening yet, so again, we're, there's nothing pressing to do it. So that's my feeling. We will, we might, however, face a petition warrant article. And I don't know how all that works, so, because, you know, we would want, you know, and I don't know what would happen in that case, so.
I have a little bit of information on that, too.
Okay. So, and please, other board members jump in, but that's my, that's my feeling on it.
I agree. I'm concerned that if there is a petition warrant article that doesn't have the appropriate dollar figure attached, that's my concern.
Could, what kind of situation would we be in if someone came forward with a petition warrant article and had incorrect?
Put the fifty thousand on it, or whatever.
Well, I asked our attorney a number of questions, because obviously, this could, there could be a lot of different scenarios here. So just some of the questions I asked the attorney. One was, if the school board decided to create a factual warrant for this and put it on there, could you then not support it? And the answer was, yes, you can. So you could do a factual warrant, and then not support it on the.
The same school.
Right, that's a possibility. If there are competing warrant articles, and sometimes contradictory warrant articles, because if it's a petition warrant article, then the last one on your warrant would basically rule the day, because it would be, if it's contradictory to the one that's before it, it would be considered a reconsideration of that article. So the last, it's very important on how you order the warrant. So that was, that was an interesting bit of feedback. And then I asked if it would be a binding warrant article, and the attorney said that ultimately, it's up to the board authority as to where you place your students. You've already got a contract in place with Marshwood that says that that is an opportunity, that contract has been passed. So ultimately, the decision, final decision, whether there's a warrant or not, whether it passes or not, is up to the board. So even if there's a petition warrant article with the appropriate amount of money in there, and it passes, it's still up to the board to decide to do that.
So ultimately, if you had a board, if you had, because you're talking about dueling warrant articles. So if you had a warrant article that was correct, you had one that wasn't, the one that was correct failed, the one that wasn't correct passed.
Yep.
Because the funding is not there, because it's incorrect, or it's just ridiculous. Somebody put twenty dollars on it for all we care, and it would pass. You're saying that we're still not bound.
You're still not bound, correct.
Correct figure, he's saying.
That's the feedback that I'm getting, whether it's right or wrong, you're still not bound with that. And, you know, an example might be, something similar to that might be, let's say that there was a petition warrant article to add, and I'm just making this up, to add three new teaching positions, and the warrant passed. That amount of money, then, would be in your budget, but it's up to the board to decide whether you actually need to fill those three teaching positions or not. You're not bound by that. So the other question that I asked was, what if the number on the petition warrant article is incorrect, and that can be amended at the deliberative session? So if someone were to make a motion to amend that number to what should be the appropriate number, the deliberative session, the body at the deliberative session could amend that number.
They could, they don't have to.
They don't have to. They could. Right. So those are just some of the questions that I asked.
So anyone can come forward without, with incorrect information? With the appropriate number of signatures?
Yes.
Interesting.
But that's why I think it's important for us to get the appropriate information, like tonight, with the cost sheet out there, because that's, that's as close as we can get it, reasonably get it. Obviously, if you have a number of students in the summertime in that particular grade level move in or out, that would, that would change it, but, you know, that's about as close as we can get.
Yeah, and so we put, say, three hundred and twenty-five thousand aside for this, and a bunch more students move in, and it ends up costing four hundred, we're gonna have to find that somewhere, that extra seventy-five.
Just like any other students that may move into the high school. Yeah, it would, it would either come out of your reserve that you're putting in place for that, or more likely, coming out of your budget, which, for all intents and purposes, is RGS.
And remind the fact that it jacks up any per pupil price here.
One misconception is that people, people look at the per pupil cost of a student here at Rollinsburg Grade School, and if we take twenty-seven students out, then you can take that per pupil out and offset the tuition. That's incorrect, because your facility still stays the same, your administration stays the same, your instructional staff, absent from that one teacher and pair that we're reducing, everything on the footprint stays the same. So you can't just take your per pupil and transfer that over and say that you're gonna offset the cost. It doesn't work that way.
And again, another reason to delay would be to build up our tuition fund, so that we are way off when we move sixth grade. It's, it's tough. I mean, based on some of the things we've heard, we may be facing a petition warrant. But I think, as Dr. Gudonphy said, I think it's important, now that we have something that's really clear, I think it'd be important to start getting that information out.
Yes.
And I don't know how the board feels about, you know, I just feel it's premature, but it's up to the board whether or not we think it's the right time. The board feels it's the right time.
Well, I'll just make this comment. We had the meeting, we asked folks to come to it, we had educators show up, talking about the different things. Personally, I don't think this is gonna go away. And that should never be the reason why we put a warrant on. But I think that now that we have the dollars, I mean, I've done the research. I don't, I'm not sure our reasons or the reasons you're giving are good enough to not put the warrant on there. If we get a warrant that says a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're right, we could just say, no, this is, we're not gonna abide by this. I'm not sure how this is gonna go over. I also.
Yeah, I mean, in that circumstance, I would say, that's not really a choice. We're not gonna abide by that. That is a budgetary restriction. We literally can't abide by that.
But if they come to the board, let's say they go to the deliberative session. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you.
They go to the deliberative session. They're like, well, you know, we found out that the cost for this is gonna be three hundred and sixty, whatever the number, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Okay, we're gonna vote, and it's gonna move forward to that. You know you're gonna get enough people there, and there's gonna be this outcry to do this. We put this before the voters on, as a warrant. First of all, the sticker shock is gonna be enough. We can't even get a teacher's contract passed for a fraction of this, and now we're gonna put this forward. So tell me how this looks and feels when it's staring somebody in the face. Now, I'm not saying, one way or another, whether it's the right thing to do. I think we have to put a warrant on with this. We were asked by the town last year to investigate this. The warrant that was on last year was completely inappropriate, right? The people that put that together really didn't have a clue as to how it was gonna impact, because there was no dollar amount attached to it. You can't just tell people, we're gonna pay for this, but we're not gonna tell you how much it's gonna cost. So that's why it was not binding, was investigated. So we did that. I don't know, as there's a really good reason not to put the warrant on, what is gonna be the answer next year? Because we're gonna be answering that question next year. Is the cost gonna be down next year? No, it's probably gonna be higher. So if we're concerned about, you know, we're giving the town information, we provided them with that meeting, which, you know, I think there was a lot of good conversation. But, you know, they're asking us to do something, we did the work, and it's now, now in a way, it's like, why are we still don't wanna do it? We have the cost. If this is a situation where we're either going to, if we don't do it this year, I'm not sure we're gonna have an excuse or a reason to do it next year. What's going to change? I guess that's my point. What is really gonna change?
I think if the numbers are such that, you know, we're not able to support that meaningful year, perhaps, it wouldn't be a motivating factor for that, or perhaps other reasons, but are you gonna go on more? I did have a question. Are we gonna add the tax impact to that warrant article?
Well, you would list the warrant articles as you would list any other warrant article, and in the, in the information that we would do for the deliberative session and for the budget hearing, then yes, that would, we would do a tax impact like anything else, but it would be, it would be explained and listed as any other warrant.
Okay, so there would be.
See, and I think that's key here, because all of this conversation that we've, that's been going on, there's never a price tag. This is like showing somebody a new car, not telling them how much it costs. This is telling them exactly how much it costs, based on our educated, you know, our calculations right now. I just don't know how we explain just putting it up. We've been talking about this for a year, since, since the warrant was, came down, and people wanted us to look into it. So now we've looked into it. I'm just saying, it's pretty much a, okay, here's your price tag, here's how much it's gonna cost you, now it's up to you. Because they'll never want this warrant to come up again.
I agree with you, Tom. I think that we have to, we have to put it on there and say, school board does not recommend.
Well, that was my next, that was my question. Do we all agree that this is not something that we would recommend?
I definitely don't recommend it, but I think that this has opened up a good conversation. Many of the people who I talked to who voted for the petition warrant favorably, didn't understand that this is a price increase. The word on the street was, you know, cost per pupil, subtract that number, and it's gonna save us money. So that's one misconception that we need to deal with, and by doing this, we would put that out there. And then there are the other factors, which are equally important, but we've started that conversation. What can we do at RGS now to address some of these concerns? Some of them are very valid, and we've already started talking about, for instance, increasing a day for PE or some kind of active time. And I think that we can continue to do that in a, in a cost responsible way. So it's not just shutting the door on the entire conversation, it's keeping the conversation going, but being realistic about, about the cost. And it's, but I think with the number of votes that we, that came in for the warrant last year, we have to do something.
Yeah, I agree. And you know what else? You know, you and I are in the same boat. Both our daughters are gonna be in that same grade at the same time, so, and I would love to see Morgan finish here. As I brought up at the sixth grade forum. As I brought up at the sixth grade forum, you know, and we were talking about it earlier in our budget about, you know, we're really, you know, we're cutting costs. We're doing what we can, but you know, if we want to take some of the stuff that we heard, like you mentioned, you know, the extra day of PE. That's a, I mean, that's an excellent start. But there should be a host of other things that we want to say. You know, if you wanna sell something, it's gotta, gotta stand out. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do to take it to the next level? The folks that talked, granted, there were a lot of people there that didn't have kids that were gonna be impacted at all. Their kids are gone. But there were a few that are gonna be impacted. And my daughter's gonna be one of them, so is Amber. So for, for us, you know, what would we want? I mean, and what does that look like? But I would say that we don't really have a lot of time. We shouldn't be, it shouldn't be this long tedious process to say, what are we gonna do to make those improvements? You know, based on what we heard and some of the things I agreed with, I'd be like, I'd love to see some of these things here. So what are we gonna do to say, you know what, we don't really need to send them somewhere else. We can do these things here or do some of these things here. So we have to offer something. It just can't be, this is gonna cost you king's ransom to send them there. But we've been through some of these things here, here's what we can do. But it's gonna cost money. And I said that at the meeting. And that's one of the problems with this town is, you know, we like to cut corners here and there, but is, does that make sense? And maybe it does require a little more investigation on what that is. But I don't think that is in and of itself, an excuse to delay that vote, delay that decision. You put a warrant that large in front of people, that's gonna turn some heads. You're right, Erin, people didn't know what the heck this was gonna cost. They thought it was gonna be a savings because of all.
Well, and I think some people voted, some folks that I've spoken to voted yes, only to say, yes, we should, we should look into it. You know, that was really.
I heard that too. I thought this was to explore, I didn't realize it was, that we're gonna do this.
Yeah, and then the confusion when we had other parents come up to us saying, I didn't know we were sending the kids this September. We're not.
But I also feel that we didn't hear from a lot of, you know, I feel like there was a very small number that want, like definitively want to send their kids. Everyone else, I think, is still like, oh, you know, and thinking about it and, you know, weighing the options. So I don't feel it was a large percentage of, I mean, even if you're talking to 26 or 25 students for just, if you talk one year, next year's class. I don't feel we may have heard from three. I can't only, I can't even say if that actually. I feel too, like something that I feel has been somewhat consistent throughout the discussion is that there's a misconception about the offerings here at Rollinsford Grade School versus the offerings at Marshwood Middle School. For example, you know, yes, the athletics that purportedly happens to sixth graders. I can tell you, having had two children go through that, there was not a single sixth grader on any athletic team that they were on. And, you know, gym is offered as an elective course. So you may not have that at all a whole year. You know, my, my younger son's eighth grade year, he was not able to take a gym class that whole time because he chose to take a language and he was in the band. So, you know, here at Rollinsford Grade School in sixth grade, he was in the band. He was in the chorus. He was in the play. He played sports. You know, so I think, I mean, he had PE and he played rec sports to Marshwood. But I feel like that's been really, it's kind of been bothering me that there, there seems to be a misconception. Like we have a tech group here that both of my children took part in for years. They went to Marshwood, they did not take part in the tech group. It's, it's a choice, you know, and I, and I feel like there's a real misconception about, about the offerings in both places. And so I think there's an importance in getting that type of information out too, not just the financials of it. Because I, I think there are some real academic and, and growth benefits that happen here that don't happen there.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple of things. I'm hearing that it sounds like the majority of us are interested in a similar warrant to the one that Bob put together for us to look at as an informational warrant, but with the caveat that the school board does not recommend. To get all the information out there, I'm hearing that, but you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I truly believe that, you know, based on my experience in dealing with, you know, the town and the voting over the last ten or so years. I believe that the cost for this will drive many away. Because I really don't think any of them in town, because the information, like you said, is just, it's just, there was none. There was no information regarding cost. I think a lot of them, this will be extreme sticker shock. They'll have no clue what the, what this is about and they'll, this can't be the same thing we voted on last year. And I think it's, you know, we've done our due diligence in putting together the, the actual numbers. I mean, for heaven's sake, this town wouldn't pay for a fire truck that costs that much. They wouldn't. They fought it, two to nail. Imagine what they'll do on something like this. This will be a very interesting fight. Because you're gonna have a lot of people who don't have any children in school who are voting for this. They're gonna, I just, I don't see it.
I think it's very important to get all the information out there. And the other thing I'm hearing is that the important, that the next, that as important as putting this in front of the public so they can see it is, is getting real information out.
Absolutely.
And we struggle with that. We will continue.
So, so goes to say the words out loud. I'm a little bit on the fence about putting this on, as a warrant article. I, I agree with you guys on, you know, the angel and the devil. But the other part of me is thinking that first, you know, that, that also, we are elected officials and we are elected to do what we think is best for the community, the town, the students, the school, you know, like all of those things together. So that's one thing that I'm kind of, is making me think maybe it's not a good decision to put this on. And then the other thing that's making me hesitant is the fairly significant misinformation campaigns that have gone out in the past to try and discredit things that the school board puts forth. And that concerns me because I think that there are, you know, there are people who will not trust this number. And I feel, I, I'm concerned that if, you know, some misinformation campaign gets out there that says, this is baloney and it's really only gonna cost 100, pass it. And when it only costs 100, they're gonna be giving that 226 that's left back to the town, right? I, I worry that we're opening that can of worms.
To that point, just remember that the number is whatever the deliberative session says the number it is. So, you know, the misinformation, there can be accurate information at the deliberative session.
Right.
And that, and that number.
It usually comes between deliberative session and the warrant.
Yeah, but the number that will go on the warrant will be whatever number the deliberative session says.
But to your point, people can say, well, they're gonna put that on there, but they're not gonna have to spend that. So it's gonna come back to us. I, those are good points. And it's also a very important year warrant wise, because we have to get the SAU withdrawal passed. And we have to be able to communicate that information in a clear way so that people understand what's going on with that and the benefits of passing that warrant.
And our, our putting one on doesn't preclude a petition warrant going on and confusing everybody.
True, but again, the bottom line is that we, if the information is incorrect, as you said, we're not obliged to, you know, to go forward with, you know, whatever the result is on a warrant that's incorrect. The information is, the math is.
Has a school board ever put on a warrant article that they do not recommend? Like, is that a thing? Would that confuse people?
What is an informational warrant?
Do you know?
Well, it's, it's, it's not typical.
Right. So would it think the voter, like not really even understand that? Like assume that whatever warrant article we put out there is something that we're gonna.
Well, that has to be why we have to do a lot of, a lot of trying to get information out to people.
It's not typical for the board to put a warrant on and then not support it. You can do it, but it's not typical.
I believe, as much as I don't want to, I believe we have to. I think we've been asked, we did the work, we had the meeting. You're right, did we have, you know, standing room only? No. But we've done what we said we were going to do. And I believe we're obligated to put the warrant on. We don't have to agree to it. We don't have to support it. But I believe we have to put it on with the correct number. And let the town decide. If the town says no, we're done. If the town says yes, we're done. Either way, I, I don't, and you know what? I respect everybody's opinion at this table because I think we all have a, we, we come to our opinions, you know, they're all heartfelt. This is not, you know, simple stuff. This impacts people. It's gonna impact my daughter. So I have a vested interest in how this goes.
Impact my pocketbook.
But either way, exactly. So, you know, it's not like, I don't care, do whatever you want. This is, I believe, we were, we were charged to investigate. We investigated. So there is not, I'm really struggling for a reason to delay this. Because next year it's gonna be the same thing. It's gonna be the same thing. And we're gonna be asked, why is it that we are delaying this? We really need to have a very good reason not to. We've done, you did your, you had your. It's a reason, but again, we have, but the town needs to make the decision regarding, we're, we're the financial students. We're asking the town, this is a warrant, this, we're not baking this into a budget. This is a warrant, this is your decision. Because go forward, it's gonna continue to cost as much as.
And so, yeah, and I do, I understand the point and it's very important, the information. I don't know how we're gonna get it out, that this, this is premature. And that every year, if, if the town for some reason votes for it, we will be spending $300,000 that we don't need to spend. And we could be saving that money year over year over year, saving the taxpayers that money year over year over year. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hit. And that's a, that's a substantial hit to the tax bill. And so on the, on the chance that sticker shock doesn't, doesn't stick for some reason. It's, but of course, putting on a warrant does get people's attention.
Like I said, it's gonna be a standalone. This is not gonna be baked into a budget where it's not seen. It's right there.
But it's also likely that they'll be, it's possible they'll be, if we don't put one on, it's likely there'll be a petition warrant. Which again, we would have to get information out about, so that people know the facts. And even if we do this, there may be a petition warrant, which means, I think, widespread confusion. So it's, I, you know, I don't know.
Go ahead. I just have a question. Petition warrant articles, the number is, if the number was inaccurate, could at the deliberative session also be changed? Is that right?
Yes.
It's not different because they're petition.
It can be amended at the deliberative.
And the, and the order of articles is decided by the DRA or by us?
The order of articles is decided by you.
So we could put, in the past, we have traditionally put petition warrant articles last, but we don't have to. Okay. So the school board makes that decision?
Yeah, you order your warrant. DRA has the final decision on wording, but where they go on the warrant is up to you.
So I think we've had a very good discussion. We do not have to decide this this evening. We have time to discuss this again at our next meeting before we have the number warrants. We do not have it, we will not then have warrants in time to present it to the budget committee because we're doing that next Wednesday. Because I'm assuming that because there's money on it and even our petition warrant article, that both, that we, that we could also say whether we recommend or not a petition warrant article because they have money on them and that the budget committee can do the same. I'm assuming whether they recommend it or not, even if it's a petition. So I'm thinking.
And even this, this one, if you were to choose to.
I think we can anticipate, one way or another, there's going to be a warrant for this.
But we won't know that by the, by the time we make our decision.
Right.
But I can't imagine the budget committee recommending this as well.
Can't imagine, especially if we don't.
What is your thing, your take on that?
I would be very surprised. I would be very surprised, extremely.
Well, especially if we don't.
So that being said.
All right, and I'm, and I'm going to suggest that we, that we, that we, if, if this wording is, is sort of the informational type wording, is the wording the same as?
Well, that's informational to you. I mean, when it goes on the warrant.
But you said that we could put on a factual, whatever it's called, factual, what would you call it? A factual, a factual warrant? But all warrants are factual.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it's gonna be. And DRA will, DRA will most likely tweak some of that language a little bit, but it's gonna.
I always send them to legal first and then the DRA always makes a, you know, a couple of little things. Okay, and then we can add the tax impact.
We don't add it to the warrant, but I always do that summary sheet of every, we do not.
I thought I was always right there with you.
But I don't think you can put it on just one. I think it has to be on all of them.
But we always present that summary sheet at the deliberative and the public hearing on the tax impact on all the items that are up there.
I think something to take into consideration too is that if the budget committee and the school board do not recommend something, that carries some weight. Again, I just think we really need to adjust this. I, I, I don't, I'm really trying to think of the reasons why we should not adjust this now. I'd love to put this on for you, just to see what the rationale for it is. Maybe because is not a, cause.
In reality, if our kindergarten enrollment remains steady as to what it is right now, within two years, we will not have space in this building. Because, because they, you know, they, they're just not gonna have space. So there is a very compelling reason. So this is premature. But they've been, but the town has also been hearing that the last, I think I predicted six years.
Fixing that bridge was premature too.
So I think having the tax impact with that, I mean, if it means all of them, then that's.
So what, does the board wanna try to make a decision now or do you wanna wait? And do we say anything to the budget committee next week about the possibility of this going on?
Thank you.
I think certainly about the possibility.
I believe one way or another it's gonna go on. I just, I can't imagine it's not gonna, you know, word will travel fast and then before you know it, there'll be a warrant. And then the town will have to make a decision. be a warrant, and then the town will have to make a decision. I would much rather be the ones, though, putting the warrant together. And if we don't recommend it, if we feel that this is not a good idea, we just don't recommend it. The budget committee, let the budget committee toss it around, see how much they want to put 365,000 or 326,000 worth of this. It's a lot of money. It's not a $50,000 warrant.
Oh, one more thing, I think I would just like to, since we're laying all our cards on the table, a lot of times, the feedback that I hear when saying, you know, "How much is this going to cost?" is, "Well, it would just be cheaper than to just send them all to Marshwood. Like, maybe it's time to just do that."
But they can't send them all.
And I think people need to understand that Marshwood doesn't have room for all of our elementary kids.
They've made that pretty clear.
They've made that clear. We've been trying to make that clear, but I don't know that it's really made its way around everywhere, so maybe that's part of, yeah.
Well, I think that will go... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and if it's, if it's all about money, then, then the town's still going to have a building here, you know, if we, so...
Actually, the school board's going to have a building. Seriously, seriously, we, we, it's ours, but we have to raise taxes to it, you know.
Yeah, and we have to maintain that, we have to heat it, put a fence around it.
And get it out of the cold.
Hell, yeah. And they'll never open this building again as a school, ever. It'll be completely...
But it's not an option anyway. We can't, we can't guard A through three and send them to, you know, Summersworth and then send everybody out. That's crazy. That's, that's not going to happen.
No, but if this is a good talking point, when the deliberative session, you know, during, as a footnote, you know, that we can even say, "There has been discussion amongst the town folk that perhaps we should send all of our children." Well, we can't, and here's why. They don't have to, which they don't. We asked them, remember?
And they hedge, "Oh, we'll, we're going to work something out."
And you're not going to put them into, into, you know, you know, little huts out in the back of the building. Those are Rollinsford folks.
Rollinsford shins are, as we talked about last time.
Get that 20 by...
So it sounds like we, we, we keep this as a draft, and we make the final decision, well, we make the final decision on all of our warrants, so that we can discuss it with the, it is not right, with the budget committee next week, and a discussion there. And I, and I will, I will point out, as people talk about the cost of things, well, we had our, when we started at Marshwood, we had a tuition agreement with Summersworth. We are just now hitting the first per pupil tuition cost at Marshwood five years later than we started with the Rollins, in, in Summersworth. So it is indeed, the base tuition cost is indeed better for us at Marshwood than, than what was the second one. Yeah, we're just, we're just hitting it right now. The, the base tuition for the first year there went up 3% every year. So, I mean, so that, that, that was a financial decision. It was sort of the perfect storm, where people who wanted to save money and people who wanted a better education came together, and, and it passed overwhelmingly. It was one of the most overwhelming votes that ever happened in this town. And, and I believe it, it's proven out to be a good vote, but, but now we're, now we're down to nitty-gritty little things that were... All right, so, so all set on this discussion right now. All right, we do have one other, one other item here, which is the water district discussion. I asked to have this added, because it occurs to me that we, as the school, are a member of a water district, but we have no representation.
Yeah.
And so, so how do we go about being represented? And I don't know. I don't know if it's a, if it's a, if it's a note to the water commission saying, "How do we get represented?" Is it a note to our lawyers saying, "How do we, how do we get represented?" How do, how do we get allowed to speak? You know, do we have to beg permission, or are we allowed to speak because we're...
Oh, they won't let residents speak. Why the hell would he let the school speak?
But I mean, so, so, so as a board, there must be a way we can, where do we want to start? Do we want to start with...
How about a letter or an email or something, some sort of...
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I'm not real knowledgeable about your water commission, but I, I would assume that we would draft a letter from, I can draft a letter from my office, basically asking in, in regards to the school board, how you get a vote. I mean, seeing as to me, if a resident has a vote, then you should have a vote, so...
I think it's worth finding out. I think it's worth finding out what it is. We live at, you know, the school is probably one of the highest ratepayers in, 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 I mean, the bill is higher if they only have one, one meter going in.
One vote for each student.
There you go.
Now they get their votes in home, home.
That'll be another $1,000 in...
I can, I can certainly find that out.
All right, so I, I think a, a, a letter, just, just checking in to, for that, would be good, just to show that, I mean, we're interested, and we're interested in being good working partners when this project starts as well. We want to be early adopters, not, not late.
I mean, we can't have any service interruption. We need to have run water in the building, so I mean...
Can't be surprised.
Yeah, that can't be, we're just unilaterally doing this, so that's not quite out of the world.
Well, they were, they were providing for water and all that stuff. That was, it was just the timing that was unknown.
And not being able to get to the parking lot, and, you know, a lot of things were happening. But, but anyway, I mean, they're, they're committed to having, to working with the school, I believe, as well as all the homeowners.
They should be.
Across the street, so, yeah.
Something, yeah.
Okay, so Bob, so you'll take that on, that letter to the water commission?
I will.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure what that means, you know, but I will.
All right, well, we have no other action items this evening. So obviously, we have the SAU meeting on Monday. It's, it's the SAU budget, for those who can make it. We do need to move it forward. We do need to have a quorum there. So as best anyone can do, we know Andrea's already excused, and I know there may be others.
I'm just down the street, so I'm just gonna, ready?
That's right.
Oh, yeah, so...
Bob and I are just going to jump in the big old bus that had all our...
Carpool.
Wednesday is the budget committee here at 6:30.
Yes.
And the ninth is our next, our next school board meeting, Wednesday next week. Wednesday next week is the budget committee, 6:30 here. All right, anything else right now? Any other, so, closing comments by visitors. I see no closing comments by visitors, closing comments by board members. Looks like we're all talked out. We are taking... Motion to adjourn. Emily?